Okay, well.
Yeah, we have eight people so far.
Okay, well. So we have like four people saying. Kevin Newman.
I should I should check myself. Like, yeah, it looks like Newman. Kevin, Kevin is here. Awesome.
Kevin's here, Richard's. I saw Richard. Richard's here.
Okay, and Melanie, you know, is not going to be here.
Not going to be here. So we're just missing Newman.
It looks like it.
Okay, well, then let's push forward. All right, so the only changes to the agenda, and I do apologize. This is completely my fault. I was trying to rush it, put it together, so the times are not right at all. So for the first item, we're gonna have 20 minutes, so that'll go until 6:50. And then I want to give the pickleball courts 30 minutes, so that will go until 7:20. And then we will give the last item another 20 minutes, so that'll go until 7:40. And then we'll have chair announcements, so hopefully we'll still get out around 8:00. So if everyone's okay with that agenda, can I get a motion to accept it?
On motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is Kevin. Does the agenda define? Public comment? Per speaker?
We do not have a defined public comment per speaker. When we get to the item, based on the interest in the hands, I see I do I might set one. But it would be in excess. It would be around two minutes, the same I would give for non-agenda public comment.
And get the tweet video.
Okay, so are there any objections to accepting the agenda? We can push forward. Awesome. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Kevin will move to accept the minutes.
Kevin, do I have a second? Thank you, Anthony. Do I have any objections to accepting the minutes? Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we're gonna roll right in here. The council member has so graciously joined us. She has an update on CIPs. So I'm going to give her the floor and then we'll go from there. This should, this will probably be our only elected rep report. Rachel and Cole and also Coda all got back to me that they will not be attending, but I will read a report from Coda. After the council members announcement. So council member Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Yeah, yes, thank you so much. I'm glad to be here. I'm sorry that I don't have much time, but I wanted to talk with you just to give you a few little updates. And we can go into more depth later on. If you'd like me to come back, I'd be happy to. First of all, you know, yesterday we passed the vendors ordinance, so hopefully that will. Get into. Into action. Hopefully soon, we will iron out all the problems. Hopefully, it will be well enforced and we will have some peace finally with the vendor ordinance. Secondly, I wanted to tell you about some of our capital improvement projects in District Two, most of which happened to be in OB. So first of all, the OB library, the city is working hard to get together more funds. So that they can go ahead and proceed with the annexation and modernization and remodeling of the OB library. And I'm sorry that, you know, it's just been so slow. However, COVID got in the way, as you know. But things are going to be moving forward now. Please God, if COVID stays down. And then the next thing I wanted to tell you about was that would be peer. Which we are working with all levels of government, including the federal. Because the replacement of the OB peer is going to be extremely expensive. Several tens of millions of dollars. And so we're probably going to need the federal government to step in. And to help us do that, we have engaged the help of our congressman Scott Peters and. Our new congressperson will be Sarah Jacobs. We will engage with her as well in the coming year. On this particular issue, well, sooner than that, actually. And then also, we are working with the Scripps Institution of Oceanography. Margaret Lienin, who is the doctor, who is the director of that institution and a professor at UCSD. And she's working very hard with her scientists to come up with many, many research projects. That can be done using the OB peer, in which case then we will have a better chance of getting federal funding. For research, especially on things like climate change, sea level rise, etc. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is the lifeguard station. Which I've actually been working since the minute I was elected to try and get replaced. This is another thing that Scott Peters is helping with. It may take federal money. It's going to be fairly expensive. But we have gotten together with both the police and the fire rescue department, the lifeguard department. And they are going to work together. So this will, the new station will have a place for the police to be able to come in. Use the restrooms, write their reports, etc. As well as have a new place for the lifeguards. I know you all are very familiar with that station. I don't know if you've ever toured the inside. But I'm sure you would agree if you do, and they'll probably be happy to show you around. It really needs to be redone. So hopefully we will get that done for you again. It's it's a very multimillion dollar project. And it's it's going to take time. Unfortunately, the wheels of government move very slowly and. We're two years behind everything because of COVID. And then I just wanted to also tell you that I was in OB the other morning when we did our point in time count. Boy, it was cold. And I was with Mayor Gloria and we did find lots of people that we spoke with and. Took surveys from who who were experiencing homelessness. And so hopefully those numbers will come out soon. They're due out in April. I don't know exactly the exact date. But hopefully that'll help us. We have to do it. It's done nationally. We were required to do it by the Housing and Urban Development. Administration of the federal government in order to get federal funds to help with housing homelessness and taking care of them. So that's, you know, why we get up so early in the morning when it's so cold. All over the country, it occurs at 7:00 AM. So here we are on the West Coast. 7:00 AM in the East, well, it's 4:00 AM in the West. So so that's what we do and we do it every every chance we get. We had to miss it the last couple of years because of COVID. And so we were able to get it done this year. And it's just a moment in time. It doesn't really reflect the reality, I think. But at least it does give some numbers so that we've got something to go by in order to get that federal assistance. To help our homeless situation. And so that are, that's the main points I had for you tonight. Teddy has other updates. He wants to give you the website so that you could put your input in as to the city budget. We're beginning the budget process, which we will finish in June. But it takes a long time and we need all of your input as to what your priorities are for our city budget for this coming year. And appreciate everything that you let us know about. And of course, contact Teddy or contact our office anytime with any ideas that you have. And that's about all I have for now, but I'd be happy to come back and go into depth on things later.
Yeah, thank you so much for swinging by and giving those updates personally. We really appreciate it. It's great. I just have one question. How would it be best to help assist you to get all those funds we need to complete the various projects in OB? What, how can we make noise and, you know, lend our voices to that effort?
Well, if you guys are members of Friends of the Library, Friends of the OB Library, if you're not, please join if you can. Otherwise, I'm sure if you can't afford it, they they will waive the dues. Because they're going to be very active in helping to raise funds to help this come along. And you know, they already did get an anonymous donation of $3 million from someone, and that is going to help substantially. So we're gonna just slog along. We keep going after grants and the fact that the government now has passed the. The infrastructure bill gives us a chance. It's it's a more dollars there. So we're hopeful. Hang in there. I know it's been about a 20-year process.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Campbell. We definitely appreciate the the updates on the CIP. I know you've got to run. So if you don't mind, Andrea, I can kind of continue on with the updates we had from the office. I know the council member has to get on to her next meeting here in a few minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Teddy, so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you all. Good to see you. Take care.
So as as she was saying, the the CIP process is ongoing. The budget process is is is. You know, in full force now. And one of the ways that you can get involved, Andrea, and the community can kind of participate right now is through a survey that has been extended by a week. So I'm going to put the link to that survey into the chat. Let me just pull up some of the notes that I had for today really quick. Because it included that CIP survey. It's an online survey. And it's it's an attempt to try to get some community input. So I apologize. I'm trying to pull up my notes here. So yeah, so there's a CIP survey that can be found online. I'll link that into the chat. That's one way where you can really provide input, not only on what the priorities for OBR. As council member mentioned, we have the library, the lifeguard station and the pier. Those are our three major priorities. We also have park improvement projects at Veterans Plaza that we're advocating for and the coastal access point projects that are ongoing. So I would highly encourage you all to find that link. I'll put it into the chat when I'm done with my update. I have a number of links there. That's going to be one of them. There's an English and Spanish version, so feel free to send the link to folks that you want to also add their their support for funding these projects in OB. They're critically important and the CIP process works alongside the general fund budget allocation process. It's a little tricky. It's a different process. They do a five-year planning process for CIP projects. So there's a five-year outlook there that runs in tandem to the annual fiscal year budget process. So a little little tricky, but. The survey is meant to provide that input. So you asked, how can, how can we opine? That would be the best place. The other few notes that I had here for the group really quick, obviously, we have the vendors ordinance that's been approved. It's going to be. Reviewed in certain aspects by Coastal Commission. I know many of you are there. Thank you for calling in. I think it was a well-rounded discussion and showed that this was a challenging issue. If any of you listened to it, I'm sure you heard all sides of this issue. Some people were like, yes, we love it. Some people were like, it's not strong enough. Some people said it's too it's too weak. And so, you know, we really tried to find that middle ground. So I'll link the press release that we put out in the chat to that, just so you can you can see kind of what the overarching themes are. And if you have more in-depth questions, you can, I'll link the staff report as well. Couple other announcements. We were joining the mayor's office this week to announce $6 million more in emergency relief for nonprofit and small businesses. This is a big deal, especially in OB. We have a ton of small businesses that are the backbone of the economy here in OB. They're some of them, most of them are in the bid, not all of them are. But they all help contribute along with our nonprofits, especially those that are providing services in OB, like Doors of Change. OB Town Council, you name it. There are so many good nonprofit organizations and community that are going to benefit from that additional grant funding. So I'll link the the release there. If you have any questions, please share it with with folks you know that could benefit. As as council member mentioned, we did the point in time count in OB. And met a bunch of folks, people living in their vehicles, people living in front in storefronts, people living on the beach. It puts into perspective the the reality of this challenge. And as the council member mentioned, it guarantees us federal funding that's needed to provide program services and. You know, assistance to folks who are experiencing homelessness. The other thing that I thought was super relevant for this group was DSD inspections. I'm sure many of you, especially with this group, have gone through the process of approval for DSD permit applications, project approvals and so forth. Beginning. This month, they're going to start doing virtual inspections. That's going to speed up the process. To be able to get projects approved and get folks the city permit approval. So there's going to be a virtual process. I'll put a link to that. Info so that, you know, folks that you know who are just getting that inspection. Process done by DSD can do that virtually i- if they qualify. So I'll link some info there. There's also. An initiative called Build SD Better. It's a way to try to. Be more holistic about how resources and funding are being deployed. And so there's a workshop that's going to be happening in the next week. I'll link the the info there to build better SD as well as how to register and encourage you all to lend your voices to that. I know it's a vocal community, and so anytime that you all can tune into those meetings, it's super helpful for us. Lastly, something that's always a top of mind for us is the short-term vacation rental regulations. That's going before Coastal Commission next week. So I'm going to link the agenda to that as well. Encourage you all to lend your voice. It's been a longstanding issue for us. We've all, we all know the talking points. But now it's the State Coastal Commission we need to compel. So I'll link that agenda item into the chat as well and hope that you all can attend. And as always, appreciate your input and happy to answer any questions.
Teddy, one quick question. Regarding the vendor ordinance, can you provide any additional information regarding additional resources and funding? To provide additional dedicated park rangers and/or additional dedicated code enforcement officers to help with the enforcement, particularly in the beach areas?
Absolutely. That, so in January, we kind of saw this coming. We put our budget priority memo out. Greg, I'll link that again so you can see it. But that it's it's been a priority for us, not just for vendors, but for short-term vacation rental enforcement. We need more park rangers and we need more code enforcement officers. So it's going to be a top priority. I think. Last year, we requested several new park rangers and we got one. This year, we're going to be requesting more than that, and then we're going to be doubling our request for code enforcement. They just need the support. And so that's going to be a top priority for us. And it's already in our priority memo. Just as a reminder, the mayor releases his proposed budget based off of those memos on April 15th. And then the first week of May is when all the council members come together and say, okay, based off of what the mayor's proposed, here's what's missing. And then we have that whole week of a deluge of departmental overview. So. We'll be in touch as that process goes along, but just so you know, we are requesting additional funding for code enforcement and park rangers because it's key to getting these things implemented. So if if there's opportunities for you to lend a voice of support, we'll send the planning board that agenda, that time for you to call in. And we would definitely appreciate the echo of the need for for more enforcement officers.
Thank you for that, and we appreciate all of your hard work in getting that ordinance finally passed yesterday. Thanks again.
Thanks for calling, Greg.
Does anyone else have any questions? Kevin?
You're muted, Kevin.
The big elephant in the room, I guess, at the vendor ordinance, other than, you know, the enforcement questions, was Coastal Commission. Some say not needed. Other cities didn't go through coastal. Part of the ordinance referenced coastal is the expectation that some can go into effect quickly and other parts may not. I mean, the coastal review can take a year on some of these things, so it's very concerning if we have to go through, you know, another year of this craziness. So any answer that your office can provide on that, or, you know, the city attorney is, I think, very much wanted right now.
This, I wish there was city attorney office representatives on the line. I know that their office has a lot of say in how this ordinance gets crafted, just to be. Something that can stand the test of of of. Challenge.
They don't tell me where to put it in the right place.
Sorry about that. So in terms of, in terms of, is that right, Tracy? The. My my train of thought is totally blown. Tracy, you gotta.
I'm sorry. I was trying to mute somebody else and it it went on the wrong person. So sorry. We're talking about, you were talking about Coastal Commission and how long you think it's going to take and whatnot.
Yeah, so some communities fall into the coastal overlay zone, and so even communities in District Three had certain blocks that were. Subject to coastal commission overview. That's a state entity. Our office has been working closely with staff and and members of the Coastal Commission to let them know how important this is. So our hope is that they do review and then, you know, kind of expedite approval on this, given that we've. We've we've checked a lot of the boxes in terms of making this ordinance pretty sound by meeting a lot of the community needs and interests. So aspects of the coastal commission approval, aspects of the ordinance will be subject to coastal commission approval, but. Portions of the ordinance will go into effect. As stated at the beginning of, I think it's June, June or July 1st. And so, you know, that's our, that's our plan is to begin implementation so that education and outreach from CBOs will begin immediately. Some of the escalated enforcement will need to be reviewed by Coastal Commission. We hope they'll do that expeditiously. So the the plan is just to follow guidelines within the state law when it comes to development and economic activity in the coastal development zone. So that's kind of, we're just trying to follow the rules. We, if you listened in last night, a lot of the city agreed that. You know, this is something that probably should be left to community members and and cities like ours to make the decision. Nonetheless, we are trying to make this as sound of an ordinance as we can, so we're going to go through that process. What I will say is that when it gets a date at Coastal Commission, we'll be reminding everyone to call in there as well. To remind them how important this is to protect public safety, access to public space and promote entrepreneurship in San Diego in a way that reflects the needs of of our community. So when that date is set, we'll we'll remind you folks you can you can attend, but to answer your question. Aspects of it will have to be reviewed just by the nature of the coastal overlay zone. And much of the ordinance will go into effect as planned. I believe it was the first of June.
Okay, great. Thank you, Teddy. Daniel, I see your hand up. Do you have a question for councilmembers' office?
I do. 15 feet between vendors is not nearly enough when you have scooter blocking sidewalk. When you cannot even hire enough police in the police department. I don't understand the disingenuous speech and and how you can talk to the public with a straight face. No one will listen to me. I mean, I have a name you can't pronounce. I know I lose credibility right there. But really, you need to rework this whole vendor ordinance and send it back to square one. Please, it it's not nearly enough. It doesn't have enough teeth for your community. I taught school right up the road on Newport, on Newport at Ocean Beach Elementary. I know your community. You're turning it into a Coney Island.
Daniel, do you have a question or?
I posed my question already. How did you arrive at 15 feet between vendors?
Okay, thank you.
Andrea, I have one. I do have one question.
Oh, well, Craig, can we post it? Teddy, do you have a response, or should I move on to Craig's question?
Happy to take Greg's question.
Okay, thank you.
Heard something from the OBMA, and so it's a point of clarification. In your understanding. Does any portion of the ordinance go into effect in the coastal overlay zone? Before the court, before Coastal Commission approves the ordinance? And it's only certain portions, or does the ordinance only go into effect in those areas of the city that are not within the coastal overlay zone?
So from my understanding, and you know, I apologize, I've been, we've been short-staffed at the office. I've been taking on a number of different roles. So I haven't combed through it as much as I'd like. I did pay attention last night. From my understanding, many aspects of this ordinance go into effect right away. The portions that will be subject to coastal overlay or to Coastal Commission review, I think, are going to be primarily. Based on the enforcement aspect, and I'm not sure exactly how it's going to look, but some of the education, the outreach, the, you know. Reaching out to vendors so that they know what the new rules are will start right away. Dependent on the second rating and Mayor Gloria's signature. That, and we're hopeful that the timing of that and Coastal Commission review will sync up so that we're not with this huge gap. But again, it's a state commission. We're going to need community input and voice to to help them move this along as well. So as soon as we have any inclination of what that date's going to look like, we'll alert you so that we can direct these questions and and urgency to the Coastal Commission.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Teddy. It was great to hear from the council member. I have one more, and you luckily covered most of what Coda had sent me. So I just have Rebecca Smith from the county supervisor's office, and then we can hop right into non-agenda public comment. So if you are seeking to make a non-agenda public comment, please do use, utilize your virtual raise hand function so I can go down the list as soon as Rebecca's done giving us the update. Thank you. And this is non-agenda public comment. So if you're here for pickleball or for the project, please don't raise your hand. Okay, Rebecca?
Thanks, Andrea. So I'm Rebecca. I'm here from Supervisor Lawson Rimmer's office tonight. Good to see some familiar faces. I'll be coming every month. I just have a couple quick announcements from the county side. So we all know that traffic is a big problem in our region. It makes us late. It worsens climate. It worsens climate change. It takes away time that we can spend with our loved ones. Supervisor Lawson Rimmer is excited to welcome a huge traffic improvement project, new car pull lanes on I-9. So there's nine miles northbound and southbound that are now open from Carlsbad to Solana Beach. These are a major incentive to encourage people to share a ride instead of driving alone. The supervisor is a supporter of infrastructure investments like this, and will continue to fight for projects that reduce pollution and increase our quality of life. While we're on the subject of pollution, the county supervisors voted unanimously to advance climate action by prohibiting county investments in any corporation that engages. In the exploration, production, drilling or refining of coal petroleum or natural gas. The supervisor believes that this action is important, is an important step to align taxpayer investments with our values. This vote ensures that the county's 13 billion investment pool is not supporting fossil fuel industries that profit from destroying our planet and mortgage our future. And then lastly, speaking of investing in our future, if you are a parent, grandparent or guardian. You know how hard it is to find pre-K or childcare right now. San Diego is struggling with a historic shortage of educators for children that are under five. As a matter of fact, California child, the California childcare workforce has dropped 10% compared to pre-pandemic levels. So as a mom of a toddler, Supervisor Lawson Rimmer wants to make sure that the public is aware of a program that offers tuition-free training for these jobs. The San Diego Quality Preschool Initiative offers free tuition for a degree in child development. It covers your tuition costs, books and even a computer. This is an amazing program where you can learn new skills, get your schooling paid for and stay out of debt. So we definitely need these educators. Please feel free to share this info with your friends and neighbors. Thank you all, and I'll put more information about all of this in the chat.
Thank you, Rebecca. Do we have any questions for our county supervisor's office? Okay, wonderful. So I see non, I see a couple hands up for non-agenda public comment. So I'm, again, everyone will have two minutes, and I will go ahead and start with Todd Sprogg. Is that how you say it? And again, this is non-agenda public comment.
I apologize, Andrea. I think I'm, I wanted to talk about the pickleball. Yes, I apologize.
It's, we're almost there. Promise. Okay, no, you're good. Okay, so then I'll go ahead and start with Joel Day. Joel, two minutes is yours.
Hey, everybody. Joel Day here. I'm running for city council in District Two. Over the last couple of weeks, we've knocked on thousands of doors in OB. I hope one of your, you were one of them. Look, I'm running because we need to restore confidence in City Hall where we've got a council member who just came before you and said that. We're two years behind on so many of the priorities that we care about in Ocean Beach because of COVID. Well, the reality is that all these capital improvement projects, we've got more infrastructure money than we've ever had. Every city worker is an essential city worker for the last two years. The reality is we're two years behind because Jim Campbell has largely had inaction at City Hall. Lack of leadership and policies that divert diff from Ocean Beach, developer impact fees from our communities. Passing those sorts of policies are are the reason why we have poor infrastructure and no capital improvement projects. And so these are the issues that I really want to talk about with our neighbors. What I want to talk about in this room, housing, infrastructure, homelessness. We need to discuss these in a broader debate. And so what I'm asking for y'all to do tonight is to consider maybe pairing with the OB Town Council or the Point Loma Association. And so what I'm asking for y'all to do tonight is to consider maybe pairing with the OB Town Council or the Point Loma Association, and have a broader forum, a broader debate about the issues. Just this week, the Democratic Party has actually declined to endorse the incumbent so that the community actually gets a much broader voice in the, in this race. That's you. You have a more powerful voice than you've ever had. And I hope that we can have a broad issues-based discussion in this forum. I'm Joel Day. I'm running to make City Hall work for working families. You can learn more at JoelDaySD.com. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Mandy, the floor is yours. I'll start your two minutes once you start talking.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to announce that I am too, running for city council. I'm a land use advocate and environmental activist, a mother of two, and a military spouse. I have fought to keep the coastal height limit and oppose Measure E due to the unsustainable development and the impact that it will have to the community with no regard for the projected sea level rise and no regard for the history of the topography of Midway. I will invite to ensure that beach and coastal access is for everyone and not just a privileged few. As an indigenous woman, land use is very near and dear to my heart. I've long been an advocate for a safer, more inclusive district two. We need someone who's not just going to talk about it, but be about it when it comes to community issues. I can and I will represent the needs of my constituents. And we need a fresh new perspective for D2. We deserve a representative who listens and who cares about her constituents and is committed to the community and not sold out to corporate interest. I intend to bring the community back to City Hall with more transparency and leadership. I want to partner with the local community planning groups and community leaders to bring forth common sense solutions that work for everyone with policy that progresses our city towards a brighter and more inclusive and equitable future. I'm not going to call you names or ignore you. I'm going to call you back. You can reach me anytime at 619-535-9411, or take a look at my website, mandyhavlick.com. Come join my efforts and volunteer for the campaign and help me bring community back to City Hall. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mandy. And then I only see one more hand up. I see Daniel's. So let me get back to my participants just to double check, but the floor is yours, and I'll start your two minutes once you start talking.
Thank you for having me. I'm in a somber mood. My family, they are in Europe, and I grew up near Yugoslavia. And I feel very badly about what's going on there, but you know, ladies and gentlemen, follow the money, follow the money in District Two, and you'll find out the truth. One of my opponents for District Two, I'm also a candidate, except I'm not asking for your vote. I don't want your vote. I wouldn't get your vote anyway. I know that. Because most voters follow the money, and they follow the big, big names. And then they get in trouble. They get in big, big, big trouble. It's up to you to find out who's a pure candidate and cares about you in Ocean Beach, not someone that, in a fundraising war with another candidate. Capital improvements. Why am I the only candidate to attend a capital improvement meetings with the city every week? How is that possible when I don't have any money? And I'm care, and I care about you. Why would I open on my own nickel, on my own dime? Why would I open a satellite office in Ocean Beach and have someone work there? And help you on my own nickel? I don't need the money. Why do I have more money than any of these people? But I don't put my own money in the campaign to prostitute the campaign. It's wrong. You're not going to Delmar Track to vote on a race for, you're voting for a politician. And you need to find out the truth.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to roll into our first agenda item. So for the project applicants for Santa Cruz, are you here? Forty-six oh five.
Tony Christensen, Civil Engineer, Lancer Air for the.
Hi, we, can we have, help Tony share his screen?
Sure, please.
Yeah, of course. We're going to let you share your screen. You can go through your presentation, and then we will go through board and public comment, and then vote on the project.
Hey, Tony, can you speak again for a minute so I can locate you in the thing?
Yes, right here, Tony Christensen.
Okay, let me see. All right, so you should be able to share whatever you need.
I see his screen.
Okay.
The floor is only yours, Tony.
Hey, thank you. I think what I'm going to do is actually read what you have on the agenda to start with. That this, this is a small lot subdivision in the coastal development, coastal development permits, side development permit, and vesting tenant map, subdivide existing parcel into two parcels. Retain the existing single dwelling unit on one parcel and construct a new 2,400 square foot, two-story, single dwelling unit on the second parcel located at forty-six oh five Santa Cruz Avenue. That does a pretty good job of explaining what, what we're, what the intention is. We start, if you can see on this, this, let me zoom in just a little bit on this. We have two lots here currently, and what, what the small lot subdivision allows is for this, these two lots to be divided in the other direction. And that's what this shows. So this is the existing house on, on the lot. This is the one that will remain. Nothing will be done with this, with this house. This one is the, the house that is to be constructed. We actually have the, the project architect, Tim Jones, here to answer any questions you may have concerning the, the, this house's design and so forth. The, the only other thing that's going to happen on this project will be some improvements out in the street which are mandated by the city. Let's go to the. This is a, a view of the couple elevations of, of the proposed home. And the, and then let me give you the other. So this is, this is the west side of the property. This is, this is the side that will be adjacent to the large home, which is westerly of it. This is the elevation that will be seen from the existing parcel, the existing home. This, go back up to this. This is the, the view from the alley with the, with the garage located there. And this is the other street view with the actual entrance in this location. Go back to this. And that'll, that pretty much shows you the way this is oriented. We also have landscape plans which depict the landscaping that will occur around the property. It will be well landscaped, this one, and we will have some street trees which are, will be part of the project as well. And that's pretty much everything I have to say unless Tim has something to say. Available for questions.
I'm here to, Tim Jones, architect, and I'm here to support Tony and, and as the engineer, he may not be quite as familiar with some of the architectural questions that might or might not occur. So if you need me, speak up, and I'll be happy to address any issues that I can.
Wonderful, thank you. Kevin, do you want to give a rundown on PR, what was discussed at the project review committee?
Yeah. So the project review committee recommended approval of the project as shown. You know, we covered the, the plans and elevations. It seemed like the consensus was, you know, they, they liked the overall, you know, design and offsets and roof line of the house. The project is process three because of the small lot subdivision. Our community plan does speak against lot splits. However, the, I think the consensus was this kind of front rear arrangement of the small lot subdivision is basically a similar outcome to what you would have with the two-on-one that we typically see. And again, that was a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay. Does, do I have any board member questions? If you could just, I, okay, cool. I can't see you guys as well when we're sharing the screen, so if you could just utilize the hand raise function. But Anthony, the floor is yours, and then anyone else who wants to speak, public or board, just raise your hand.
Yeah, thank you. What is the, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't see it. I didn't have a chance to look at the preliminary information. What is the original lot size and square footage?
I believe that sixty-nine, currently it's sixty-nine fifty-five square feet.
Okay, so it'll be, whatever, it'll be basically cut in half, right? But like Kevin mentioned in the.
A, a little more area goes to the existing home than to the proposed one, the alley.
Okay, yeah, I certainly shared the concerns about the lot split, but the way you, you're doing it front to back like that rather is, is a lot less problematic, in my opinion, than the other one. So, thank you.
Yes, we're hiding our density with this. Do I have any other questions or comments, concerns? Do I have a motion? Sorry, Virginia, has her hand up. Virginia?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think the fact that it's a corner lot and doesn't, it doesn't affect the access to either lot after the split is a good thing. When we have a front-to-back split on a mid-block lot, it's problematic.
Yeah, since then someone doesn't get alley access.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So is the, the split lot where the new product, the new building is going to go up, is that going to receive a Froud Street address?
I, just guessing on this, I would guess that would be the case, but I, I really don't know. I can't tell you.
I, I perhaps can speculate for you. It, it should, that, that address will be assigned by the city address coordinator during plan check. So we don't even know what they might be considering right now, but I think your conclusion is logical. That would be the street frontage and the, the front door and the front porch, the entryway, if you will, to that house is coming from Froud Street. So I would anticipate that would be the address.
Okay.
I have a motion. This is Kevin. If there's no other comments.
I don't see any other comments, Kevin. So go for it.
I move that the OB Planning Board recommends approval of this project.
I second.
Thank you, George. Do, okay, so with a second on the floor, do I have any discussion of the motion? Either public or board member comment or discussion? Yeah, Terry Hudson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I don't know how many times you want to split an R1 to an R2. I'm, I'm just attending tonight for pickleball, but I'm kind of disappointed that you're following suit, like, you know, splitting an R1 into an R2. And if you do split it, everybody, I don't care if they have corner access or not, you have to allow it for everybody.
All right, thank you, Terry. Do I have any other discussion on the proposal, or I'm sorry, the motion?
I want to add real quick that this block used to be R1, which people would recognize as single family. That's no longer the case. This had been rezoned a little while back to match the rest of OB.
Okay, thank Kevin. Yeah, we don't have any more single family zoning in Ocean Beach. So then Tracy, will you call the rules so we can take a vote?
It looks like Ron Bell may have.
Yeah. Okay, Ron.
Ron Bell is trying to lower his hand, but doesn't know how.
Okay, no, okay. All right, thank you, Tracy. We're almost there, I promise you guys.
All right, okay. So Ron, I lowered your hand for you. I'll take, I'll take role right now. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane? Sorry, I didn't catch.
I think they're trying to unmute.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, Jane. Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Richard? Unmute. Okay, I see his thumb up. George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
Okey-dokey, passes unanimously. We're all good.
Tony, I will go ahead. I'll fill out your bulletin and send it to your planner, the bulletin six-twenty concerning whatever it was. And best of luck and a speedy rest of the review process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, if you could just stop sharing your screen, that'd be lovely. And have a great rest of your evening, unless you want to stay around for pickleball. Pickleball, we'll be more than happy to have you. So moving on into the next item, and we are back on schedule, thank goodness. I will be giving the floor to, I believe, Stephen Boylan to your presentation.
For us?
So, yeah, so we will give you time. Again, I have this scheduled for thirty minutes, so it's, you know, hopefully you guys have a shorter presentation as we have a lot of public comment here. And while they're giving the presentation, if you are seeking to make a public comment after the presentation is over, please just utilize the raised hand function, and then I will go down the list. And again, based on how many hands are up, we might limit everyone to just two minutes. Okay? Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, can you see the presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Mike Shinzaki, and my colleague's name is Stephen Boylan. We are professional pickleball players, instructors, and ambassadors who are devoted to fostering the sport of pickleball here in San Diego, where I was born and raised. Our proposal is to repurpose vastly underutilized tennis courts at Rob Field into a premium pickleball facility for public use. We believe this will revitalize Rob Field and be a huge cultural boon for Ocean Beach. We seek your recommendation to the city. This is ultimately a discussion about improving the community we live in and about using park space efficiently. Is it possible that we could be doing much better? When is change necessary? This proposal is supported by the vast majority of the local community, including many residents who play both sports. This is not an attack on tennis. This is not a debate over which sport is better or more fun. As former USTA competitive tennis players, we love both sports. The park space in question does not belong to a sport, but rather to the city. We have an obligation to utilize finite city land to best serve the broader community. Resources given to permit holders are not meant to be kept forever. We must periodically reassess and address municipal issues when they're pointed out. Right now, there is not one dedicated pickleball facility in the city of San Diego. Global Tennis Network lists 1,229 tennis courts in San Diego, not including all private courts. We have worked on this project for four and a half years. We have assessed over fifty candidate locations and met with dozens of city officials for hundreds of hours. We believe this proposal is the best, most realistic solution. We acknowledge that the prospect of change at Rob Field kindles nostalgia. It's fair to wonder how this would work, and everyone who lives nearby deserves a say. We happen to give a voice to the thousands who are concerned that the proposal gets blocked. The circumstances require us to be flexible, open to new ideas. The circumstances require us to be flexible, open to new ideas and brave enough to act if it is needed. This solution maintains tennis accessibility and at the same time welcomes pickleball into our community. We requested tennis court usage logs from Rob and Barnes and were not granted them. But the public cares about this data. It's necessary for a discussion on efficient use. Frustrated by a lack of data, we obtained documentation of the usage rates of both clubs. We have over one hundred hours of video footage and photos from all days of the week and all times of the day. These videos affirm that Rob and Barnes are utilizing on average only twenty-five percent of their court capacity. There are times when almost all thirty-seven combined courts are vacant. If you visit the pickleball courts at Point Setia Park, Bobby Riggs or Mackenzie Creek, you will find them at or even above one hundred percent capacity most hours of the day. So to say that there are just some hours that people don't play sports is either not true or pickleball is an exception. Either way, those parks are not in the city of San Diego. We can do much better for our local residents by consolidating these two clubs at Barnes and offering pickleball at Rob Field. Our data indicates that the combined tennis activity would still only hit perhaps a forty-five percent court usage rate on twenty-five courts at Barnes, meaning all Rob members could play at Barnes and there would still be significant room to spare. We are preparing an extensive report, which we will submit to your board and the general public by the end of the month. Some groups are proposing to strike pickleball lines on all public tennis courts within this jurisdiction and enforce a joint use arrangement. This means sharing the courts, grumblings from both sports about the extra lines and different nets and logistics required to set up and reserve court space. It's a headache that has led to many problems at other venues we've seen around the country. The tennis folks don't want that, and actually neither do we. Our proposal instead urges us to share total city land separately. Everyone coexisting with just what they need.
Hold on one second.
Moving to the next slide.
We are trying to move to the next slide. There we go. Okay, there we go.
I found this two days ago. It's a chart sourced from Yelp and published on Yahoo showing that pickleball is growing much faster than any other activity. This is not a new phenomenon or a problem. It's been brewing for over five years. Other major cities are addressing it, albeit imperfectly. We've had a chance to learn from our experiences traveling the country and even world, teaching and playing tournaments. We can do it right the first time here. This proposal calls on us to be forward thinking. You can see that the sport of pickleball is skyrocketing in recent years. It's up to the board to determine if pickleball has a rightful place in Ocean Beach. Pickleball needs dedicated space in some form or another. And Rob Field is the best and most realistic solution we have found after four years of research. We are asking you to take into account utilization rates as well as community participation and the astronomical growth of pickleball, both here in San Diego and across the country. To share public land is sensible and optimal, a gesture of goodwill and progressive thinking. And it's a signal to the broader community that we acknowledge their ever-changing needs. I will now hand it over to my colleague Stefan Boyland, who will present the proposal in more detail.
Thank you, Mike, and hello, everybody. Just give me one second to set up here. Okay. Okay, hi, my name is Stefan Boyland. Mike and I currently work at Barnes Tennis Center directly across the street from Rob Field. Mike has been an instructor there since two thousand eighteen and launched their pickleball program in two thousand twenty as a volunteer. I have traveled the country as a national instructor for camps run by Pickleball Magazine and now runs sessions and clinics at Barnes. We have curated sessions at local venues such as Bobby Riggs, Mentonitas, University City Rocket Club and Pacific Beach Tennis Club. We have volunteered thousands of hours to these clubs out of a love for the sport and the community. Both of us have competed at the pro level nationwide and have seen how pickleball is run all around the country. We have now devoted our lives to improving the local scene here in San Diego. We have significant industry experience in order to manage this project the right way. We propose to repurpose twelve vastly underutilized tennis courts at Rob Field into thirty-six brand-new pickleball courts for public use. We will resurface, paint, install nets and update the fencing and signage. Everything will be brand-new. We will add seating, umbrellas, bathrooms, showers and an improved clubhouse and viewing section. It will be a first-class facility, a bustling hub for both recreational and competitive players, serving thousands of local residents each week. This will not be a private club. There will be no membership model. It will be a public facility open to everybody. No initial construction is required because the facility can occupy the existing dimensions and foundation. No city funding or manpower is required. We will fund the entire project ourselves because the city is unwilling. The current proposal is a two-point-five million dollar investment over the first five years, which would essentially be our entire life. We opt to file as a for-profit entity since we cannot make this sum as a donation. We must retain the right to earn it back over a reasonable timeframe. The city has said this is not an issue. There are numerous private leases on city land, including shops in Seaport Village, hotels around Mission Bay, stores in Balboa Park and a gift shop on the Ocean Beach Pier. We will be working closely with the city to set affordable pricing and usage stipulations so we remain accountable to the public and help guarantee park utilization. In addition, proposed prices will be half the rate of local municipal tennis clubs, including the current operator. We will offer a much greater level of transparency, publishing court utilization data for the public to see on a regular basis. Something both the Peninsula and Barnes Tennis Club have refused to do. We believe the public has a right to know how public courts on public land are being utilized. When the city starts taking this issue seriously, they may require these two clubs and perhaps all municipal clubs to provide ongoing court utilization data. This should confirm that both clubs are utilizing about twenty-five percent of their capacity on average. Accurate utilization will prove beyond a doubt that consolidating these two clubs is not only possible but preferable as it can make room for a pickleball facility in Ocean Beach, serving many more people in the local community. Many people wrongfully believe that adult tennis is not accommodated at Barnes Tennis Center. Their mission statement emphasizes youth tennis, but their lease terms prevent discrimination in any manner against any person on account of age. Barnes regularly runs adult clinics and tournaments. Their lease also requires six of the twenty-five tennis courts to be made available for unrestricted use to the general public at all times, even during events. Meanwhile, Rob Field's tennis activity rarely exceeds six courts. We are not accusing Barnes of violating any of their terms. We like Barnes and the management and what they do. But for all of its splendor, occupying five hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet spanning over twelve acres, Barnes almost never fills up its twenty-five courts. Rob Field almost never fills up its twelve courts. The two clubs are frequently desolate as separate facilities. The city should not terminate the Barnes lease. Better would be to discontinue the Peninsula's special use permit, which can be done with thirty days written notice. And suggest the players to play across the street. The circumstances and the community simply require change. Combined as one facility at Barnes, you could have a bustling tennis hub, filling to almost half capacity, we think. Better energy, a better experience with room to spare. By consolidating Rob players across the street at Barnes, there would be room to offer a full pickleball experience in Ocean Beach. We propose a full slate of structured pickleball offerings and resources. We will offer programs for new players who seek a place to learn the sport. We will also place a major emphasis on youth programs, both PE and after-school. We will also have sessions tailored to the senior community, handicapped and adaptive players, active military and veterans. And there will be time slots available free of charge for underprivileged individuals who cannot pay. We will offer opportunities for competitive players who wish to train and compete. The city lacks all of these programs today. We will provide free balls and paddles for any player who needs. This will be a full community resource with an entire range of curation, accommodating all residents and all levels of play. There were three insightful articles published in the last two weeks, The New York Times, NPR, and perhaps most interesting of all, an article on the US Open tennis venue in New York. The most prestigious major tennis venue in the world is repurposing some of their tennis courts to pickleball. If it's good enough for the US Open tennis venue, perhaps it's good enough for Rob Field. We all have many friends and colleagues who play pickleball. This motivates us and hopefully you as well to serve them better. It's time we value and use public space efficiently to make room for pickleball. Asking tennis players to play across the street at a much nicer facility is an inconvenience, but it will help us better serve the broader community.
San Diego's deficient by hundreds of pickleball courts. If we have the same courts per capita as Seattle, for example, we would have almost five hundred. Thirty-six would still be a great start. Problem will keep compounding if avoided. Pickleball will continue to grow, amplifying the need for dedicated facilities. We have a chance to fix this in a realistic way, starting with one. The local tennis activity can be preserved at its current level by consolidating at Barnes. This proposal has some pushback, no doubt. Most of the discourse originates from tennis leadership figures who don't live here. They don't use the current facilities. Outside of a small handful of tennis folks, this proposal is supported by majority of actual residents, which includes both pickleball players and tennis players. Why? A significant number enjoy both sports and would like the opportunity to do so without long commutes to North County or East County. Many local residents would love to try out pickleball for the first time, once the resources are made available. That's why we have a petition list of over four thousand local residents and businesses who have submitted over five thousand documented letters and phone calls into the city supporting this proposal. Pickleball at Rob Field will be a huge enhancement to the neighborhood. Rob Field will be a flourishing park with upstanding folks getting exercise and having fun and using the park space. Out of over four thousand players and businesses on the local petition, we personally have met at least half. And there are an estimated fifty thousand county residents who have played, who play pickleball. If anything, I believe we are understating the popularity and support of pickleball. The Parks Department has not approved a pickleball facility on vacant city land. Laying more and more cement has proven to be a monumental task with no prospect of consideration after over four years of trying. Laying cement is fraught with environmental and legal issues, rendering it unrealistic for an imminent issue like this. Perhaps after a decade, the city can approve cement for pickleball, but we wish to confront the issue much sooner than that. Ideally, we have pickleball players on the court sometime this year. Sharing finite space is the right thing to do. We ask the board to support this notion. This consideration is not about the history or operators or leadership figures of a given sport. The ultimate goal is to serve the broader community starting now. The ensuing facility will be a physical, social and mental health resource for the neighborhood. It will make Ocean Beach proud. This proposal has asymmetric upside. There is virtually no risk to the neighborhood, and yet we will work to provide something extraordinary. I think it would be a serious mistake to say, this is not our problem, someone else can fix it. This is our problem, right here in our community. Many thousands of local players will tell you the same thing. The Union Tribune covered this proposal on its front page above the fold. It's real. So let us fix this problem the right way. We'll have to do it at some point. Let's do it now. Pickleball has fallen five years behind other cities, uh, but our plan will play catch-up fast and within a couple of years, we could be ahead of most other cities. By acting swiftly and decisively, we can promote proper land use principles down to the community level, resulting in an improved park. Tens of thousands of pickleball players will be grateful. Ocean Beach will be better off for it. San Diego will be better off for it. We ask for your support in a letter to the city recommending this proposal. Oh, one more thing. If the board is unable to vote in favor of a recommendation, we would do have. Thank you for your consideration and we can now answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'm going to go through, uh, the public comment first because everyone's been patiently waiting with their hands up and, uh, there are a lot of you, so, and, um, we have about thirteen more minutes left for this, so I am going to limit everyone to two minutes. And we're going to start with Carol Farr. Carol, once you unmute and start talking, I will start your time.
Uh, thank you. Um, my name is Carol Farr and I'm a member of Peninsula Tennis Club and a resident of San Diego for the last twenty-two years. Tonight, you've heard from the Pickleball SD about their proposal to take over and repurpose Peninsula Tennis Club, or PTC, as a for-profit pickleball facility. The proposal is founded on some false assertions about the health of PTC and should be rejected. Here are the facts. PTC is a financially sound organization, meeting its ongoing financial obligations and generating a cash surplus. PTC has invested over a hu- hundred thousand dollars from fees and donations to maintain and enhance the tennis facility over the last four years. This has included resurfacing the courts, replacing wind screens and installing new LED lightings, and at no cost to the city of San Diego. Like most public facilities, PTC has a high utilization of tennis courts at peak times between nine AM and noon and four PM to eight PM, most days of the week. That is a higher utilization than most other facilities at Rob Field or around the city. Pickleball SD has suggested that PTSC or PTC members should be relocated to Barnes Tennis Center. Barnes is a beautiful nearby facility with a charter to promote and develop youth tennis. Their peak court usage is from three to eight PM with full courts, full court usage virtually all days of the week and the same peak times as PTC. One other point about Barnes is that the membership at Barnes costs more than twice as much as PTC. As you listen to the pickleball proposal, I would urge you to ask yourselves, why would I turn over an operation of a successful, not-for-profit community-supported tennis facility to two profit-seeking individuals based on false statements designed to paint a picture about PTC as an, uh, that are unfounded for their gain? Please don't support the pickleball SD proposal. It's destructive to our longstanding tennis community. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, I have the D mute, so once you unmute and start talking, I will start your time.
Uh, yes, hello. Uh, hello? Am I heard?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, well, first of all, um, uh, I would like to, uh, reiterate that, uh, most of this report is based on false information. So I am an OB resident since two thousand seven and a member of Peninsula Tennis Club since two thousand seven. I play, uh, three, four, five times a week. Uh, and, um, uh, my call is not to cannibalize one sport with the other. You know, so the, uh, the club is very well-used. Um, it has, um, kids tennis academy, uh, it has clinics, uh, and, uh, I don't see, uh, any reasons to change anything that's going on. And as it was mentioned, it's a nonprofit organization that runs it. It's the cheapest, uh, uh, facility in San Diego and it's very well-used. I also would like to mention completely, completely unethical, uh, methods that were used to create the, uh, atmosphere and, uh, you know, uh, engage people in trying to squeeze tennis out of, uh, Peninsula Tennis Club. You know, so we had drones flying over the club, you know, really distracting players to collect information. The members' list was somehow, I don't know, stolen or borrowed, you know, so, and the members were, sent, uh, you know, emails with completely false information, you know, about the club trying to convert the members. So that tells probably a lot about, you know, so people who are trying to, um, you know, basically grab a successful facility. So my suggestion is to, and again, I am also a pickle, yeah.
If you could wrap it up, yeah.
Yeah, I'm also a pickleball player and the difference between tennis and pickleball, you know, so it's very hard to set a tennis court anywhere, but it's very easy to set up a pickleball anywhere. And I would like to draw attention for pickleball players at the experience of La Jolla Tennis Club.
Yeah. Uh, Ron Bell, you have the floor. Once you unmute and start talking, I will start your time.
Thank you. Yeah, my situat- my, my situation's the same. These courts are very well-used. I'm a native Obesian, been here for sixty-plus years and learned tennis at Rob Field. I mean,
I mean, at Peninsula and played during high school. The high schools still use, both the boys' and girls' team use it. There are many, many clinics that are there, doubles clinics when I'm playing, that are using five or all six of the courts on the east side, so on the west side, excuse me. So the east side is then for individuals playing, and they're full. There's no doubt about it, there are times during the day, the middle of the day, when it's not as well-used. That's true of the soccer field, the baseball field, and, you know, all the fields, because more people are working during the day and doing things. But they are very well-used. And I also object to both the article that's still up on the paper here on screen that has false facts about the membership and everything else. I think we have about 500 members. Todd, I think will speak to that. We have over 500, I think, non-paying members that play. We have four, at least four pros that are teaching there regularly. One of whom was the coach at USD for 20-plus years, is very well-known in the community, loved by all. So it's a very successful operation. It's not fancy, but it's making money. We resurface the courts when we need to. We're certainly happy to upgrade the clubhouse if people feel that's necessary. We don't, but happy to do it. You know, we take care of the vegetation, we volunteer. So I just think it's a very successful thing that's being very unfairly represented. And we cannot play over at Barnes because Barnes also has activity at prime time. And they are set primarily for, you know, for the youth, which is terrific. But they use it, and during tournaments, they have the National Sixteens, the National Eighteens, and a bunch of others. And we get over at Peninsula, so it's very, very well-used. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Next, I'm going to go to Daniel. Daniel Schmikowski.
No one loves tennis more than I do. I would watch Jimmy Connors at Roland Garros and Iliana Stasi at Roland Garros. I love tennis. But come on, come on, ladies and gentlemen, come on. We're acting like children. We're not acting like adults. Give the pickle people a chance. This is America. And we're talking about a paddle sport, for the love of God. We're not talking about something so diverse that we can't come together and agree. And I've heard a lot of people talk about falsehoods and ethics and, look at, please, please, I don't buy it. I don't buy any of that.
Well, you should look at the facts.
Will you respect a few minutes? Let him, please.
Sir, sir, look, look, look. I have nothing against tennis. I love tennis. But we can coexist. We're Americans. We get, we ought to get along. And we ought to allow the, write the letter. Write the letter, please. Write the letter to the city. Support these pickle people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Todd Sprague.
Todd Sprague.
Sprague, yep.
Great, thank you. Yes, I'm Todd Sprague. I'm a member of both Peninsula and Barnes Center. And what you've just heard from the pickleball guys, Stefan and Mike, is fiction. Here are the facts. Peninsula is a successfully operated club, and it's done that as a nonprofit under a special use permit for over the past 40 years. Currently, Peninsula has over 490 members, and its membership during the pandemic has grown over 75%. It also serves 900 non-members. Also, let's have some bigger statistics. There are 22.5 million tennis players and, as Mike alluded to, 4.8 million pickleball players in the US. Since 2019, the growth in the number of tennis players is about the same size as the total number of pickleball players. Tennis is a growing sport across the country and in here in San Diego. The Pickleball SD folks would, you know, their proposal is largely based on the lie that PTC is a failing public facility, and as such, should be converted to a private, for-profit pickleball facility. Don't perpetuate, you know, this proposal's fiction and false statements. The PTC membership asks that you not support this proposal. I mean, ask yourself, why should I support the eviction of a successful, not-for-profit tennis facility from its home of over 40 years and with a family of over 490 members and 900 non-members? How does this improve Ocean Beach, Rob Field, and the city of San Diego? Personally, I've met with Stefan and Mike. Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Of course, Mandy Havlick, I have you next.
Good evening. My children are, I'm at Rob Field. I'm not a pickleball player, and I'm not a tennis club player. I'm at Rob Field about four times throughout the week, and I'm there throughout the weekend if there are tournaments or practice. Every time I go to Rob Field, I see Peninsula Tennis Club being used. Several people throughout the course, and it's being maximized, sorry, being utilized by the public. And so these assertions that it's being underutilized and that it's vacant are untrue. I know several of the people on the Peninsula Tennis Club who are local residents, and they've identified that tonight. While I do appreciate your passion for the sport, I think there may be opportunity to ask the city to install separate additional pickleballs at Rob Field. That's a choice, but the fact that you're wanting to take over all of these courts in the name of pickleball with these untruthful assertions is problematic for me. And so I would just like to rebuff your claims that this is an underutilized court. That is not a true statement, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. I'm going to move on to Josh Jorgensen. Josh.
Okay, here I am. Let me see, so I'll start video as well. Okay, so I, my name is Josh Jorgensen. I'm a board member for the USPTA, that's the Tennis Pros Teaching Association, and the San Diego District Tennis Association. I'm an experienced teacher who's coached some high-level juniors and many, many tournament players. I got involved with some park planning meetings, excuse me, meetings, and did some research for those. And what I was researching was the level of service relative to national standards for a tennis facility. And what I found out was that in North County at least, the level of service for tennis was far below national standards, whereas the level of service for other sports, such as basketball and field sports, were above national standards significantly, in some cases, two and a half times the level of service for the national standard. So my concern is that, first of all, tennis is in the same position as pickleball. We're not getting the level of service that the demand for tennis merits. And that's also based on USTA membership data, which shows that there's a very high level of membership in San Diego, where it's higher than the national level. So there's a high demand for tennis, but low, low level of service. So, you know, I sympathize with the plight of picklebars because they have numbers that are not matched by the facilities. But the same is true for tennis. And I think if park resources are going to be reallocated, it should not be from tennis. It should be from overly-served sports, such as field sports. That's a lot of land, and I get that paving, the land is problematic, but I think it's also problematic to take facilities away from tennis.
Thank you. Joe Mansfield, I have you next.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm Joe Mansfield. I'm a pickleball player, and I just want to, first of all, just speak on behalf of Mike and Stefan. They're absolutely wonderful ambassadors of the sport, and I could not disagree more that they're out trying to steal a facility. What I would say is, what people need to understand is it's an exponential problem. You can put 16 pickleball players on one tennis court, which is two to four tennis players. So when pickleball facilities move in, you're just serving exponentially more people. And so I agree, you look at the acreage of the two facilities. That is a ton of acreage in a very expensive area utilizing for tennis. That's, I get it, you guys have had courts for 40 years. But it's underutilized in terms of what the value of the land is worth. I'm playing in Fleshy Meadows. When these tournaments come to town, you're bringing thousands of people that are going to stay in hotels, eat in your restaurants. It's coming, whether you like it or not. Pickleball is here, and it's coming, and it would, this would be a great location for it. It'd be great for OB, and so I'm in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, I have Terry Hudson.
Okay. I am a native of San Diego, 64 years. I learned how to play tennis, Coronado K's, when I was in my early twenties. It's not an easy sport to learn. It takes years and a lot of money. I never really enjoyed it as much as I do pickleball. And I learned how to play pickleball in a day, and it's no different than playing ping pong, badminton. Anybody can help me out on that one. It's a very easy sport to play. And I do want to say the same thing as, one tennis court in Coronado is four courts, not one. Maybe Steph and Mike have overreached, but I do know that tennis, please, don't think about the last two years of a pandemic. Because I live in Mission Hill, so I'm overlooking Ocean Beach to Mission Beach. And I saw people going to the beach in the middle of the winter when I never see people. It might as well have been July 4th because of the pandemic. Nobody was working. So please, look at the facts, because tennis is dying out. And then, if we had membership to sign up for where I play pickleball, both in Coronado and Barnes Courts, we would far outnumber the people playing tennis. Because even myself, my family is a member of the Coronado Yacht Club 48 years. You know, so what, I go down and have a hamburger every Fourth of July? I'm just saying, pickleball is a lot of fun. Everybody is trying to get into it. It's the fastest-growing, and even, I just have to emphasize, one court is four pickleball courts. And you cannot put a pickleball net up anywhere. I wouldn't go ride my bike anywhere. I stay on a trail, I stay where it's safe, and it is a growing sport. People, every week, somebody's coming in somewhere.
Thank you, Terry. We appreciate your question. Cynthia, I think I accidentally, yeah, I accidentally lowered your hand. You're up next.
I was wondering what happened.
Yeah, that was me.
Well, I want to be careful. I don't want to run out of time before I'm clear that I am a member, I'm a board member of the PTC, and I'm urging you not to write a letter of recommendation for this proposal to, for this San Diego pickleball to take over completely the tennis nonprofit community organization of PTC and turn it into a profit entity. So we were shocked to hear that our club was described first as decaying, and when that didn't work, that we're underutilized. I think that the people, you've already heard multiple supporters here tell you all the different types of people that come in. There's the rec players, the clinic people that like to learn, private lesson pros. There's the Warren Walker that uses it for their PE. There's the Point Mama High School that uses it for their workout and for their matches. There's tournament play that goes on. There's league play that goes on. And so, you know, we have trouble at peak times to find reservations for ourselves. And the testament to this is that, you know, we run this club to make it as available to community as possible. The SUP requires us to have 20% of it available at any time for the community, so that during the week. So we have to have time where there is, it's available. It's not fully booked. We also, the other testament is that when we raise enough money in fees and memberships to run it, there is no profit being made here. If we have to do extra things like resurface the courts, which we had to do four years ago, we have major events, like the silent auction. We have all these different things happening, and we did that four years ago. We're very proud of the condition that we have the tennis courts in now. We put $100,000 in. So it's not surprising that when I heard this proposal, that they say the foundation is good. Well, yes, that's our investment. And, you know, to turn it over to someone who hasn't worked to raise that money is just, it's a slap in the face. So please do not endorse this idea.
And then I have Leslie Wajardo. And then after that, I don't see any more hands, so I'm going to turn it over to board comment after that, because we're a little bit bumping up on time here.
Good evening. Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Leslie, and I'm a native San Diegan. Grew up as a tennis player in San Diego. I live in the area. My family, including my junior tennis-playing son, were members of Peninsula. And we also play the Barnes Tennis Center. But Peninsula, we call our home very proudly. And there's been a lot of, I've heard throughout this conversation, a lot of misinformation about Peninsula. It's very well-utilized. We're there probably five or six days a week practicing. And it's very well-kept up. The courts were just resurfaced a couple of years ago. Wind screens just went up within the last five, six months. And the courts and the grounds are taken care of as if we're an entire community and a family. And it's a great place to play. A couple of things I'd like to say is, one, growing up in San Diego, we've lost more tennis facilities throughout the years. And while I'm listening to everybody, I've got 14 listed on the sheet in front of me. And I start in the East County, and I come all the way to the Bay. And we continue to lose tennis facilities. And quite honestly, we can't lose another one, because tennis is a sport that's on the rise. It is the number-one sport that's been played throughout this whole COVID period, as you can imagine. And people continue to play and come out and play the sport. So it's not on the decline. I promise you that. The other thing I did want to mention is, you know, people keep talking about, well, there's only two people on a court playing tennis, or there's only four people on a court playing tennis. You know, when I drive into the long driveway to Peninsula, and we share the space with the soccer kids and the basketball and the baseball and the softball, and there are many times that we have a hard time getting a parking space. Can you imagine having all of this facility to be pickleball, up to 192 people? Where would they park?
We appreciate your comments. One more hand, Kayanne Waters. If you want to unmute yourself, you can have two minutes.
I just wanted to give some factual information of an experience that I had with the Peninsula Tennis Club. You know, there's been a lot of rhetoric about how inclusive they are. Well, two years ago, I was wanting to take drills in the Peninsula Tennis Club. I went and paid my annual membership fee. I was there on Mondays and Wednesdays. And subsequently, three other players came that were relatively new beginners. And so the tennis instructor asked that myself and the other three players start working on a different court than everybody else playing. And then I got a text from that instructor asking that I ask the other players, who I didn't even know personally, to leave the courts and find someplace else to go play, because we were not up to the level that they wanted to have in the drills. So I'm very sorry, but I absolutely refute everything that you're saying about being inclusive to everybody in the community. It is a very elite organization that only asks for certain people to be there. And I even had to go and ask for my membership fee to be returned, which they And I even had to go and ask for my membership fee to be returned, which they gave me back the membership fee. And here on out, I have never, ever stepped foot on those courts again. I will go anywhere else to play tennis than Peninsula Tennis Club. Thank you. I highly support the pickleball.
Thank you. Okay, great. Do, so I want to close public comment and switch over to board comment now. Can we please have the screen sharing stop so I can just see everyone a little bit better? I think we get the idea of the proposal, thank you. So, board members, do I have any questions, comments from the board? Kevin?
Geez, I've got a ton of post-it notes here, I'm bored to start. How many pickleball courts are located on the Peninsula? I'm aware of one, or four, I guess. Does anyone have the answer to that question?
Can you hear us, Kevin? Yeah, there are three, there are three.
He said Peninsula.
Oh, at the Peninsula, there is zero at the Peninsula.
I mean, I just saw, like, there's a couple at Barnes.
Did you mean Barnes? Barnes has three, and Peninsula has zero.
And there's some at Cabrillo as well.
What about Cabrillo?
Cabrillo has two joint-use courts, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, I just, you know, let me, let me continue, I.
And I think Barnes Bill added a few more.
We have.
Barnes has three, we work.
Can we please let Kevin finish?
So, so we have a whole lot of tennis courts, and the pickleball courts just seem to be kind of sprinkled a little bit here, a little bit there, you know, there's like one or two kind of hanging off the side of these tennis facilities. And I, I, I was surprised to hear the number of pickleball players. And I, I think that actually came from the tennis folks. I mean, there's almost a quarter of the tennis numbers. I don't have a real sense of the actual usage, and I really wish we had some data on that. I think it's, it's very important that, you know, we look at how well these public, these are, this public land. You know, the Barnes is on public land, SeaWorld's on public land. It's important that we always, you know, check up either now and then and make sure we're, we're, if we're going to take away part of public land and charge money for it, we got to make, I think damn well sure that it's, it's, it's being used properly and, and used, you know, by enough people. And so I think it's unfortunate that we don't have some, some data to go on. I, I would imagine that Peninsula and any of these other groups have some kind of data on that, on that usage. Obviously, that's kind of a loaded question now, so. It's, I, I, I drive, you know, I drive by the Barnes facility, and I see these couple pickleball courts. And it's like a bee swarm of people crowded on these, you know, few little courts they have. And then the rest of the facility is vacant. I know we're not talking about Barnes here. I'm just asking myself, why can't we? Why can't Barnes, why isn't Barnes able to absorb the Peninsula Tennis Club? I mean, can we, is there some middle ground on the cost? I, I just, there's all these reasons not to do this and fighting this and that. I, it's inevitable, because, you know, we got two people competing for the same space. But Barnes is literally, the distance is. Is equal to the size of the facility at Rob, I mean, it's, it's right there, we need to put that to use. That's, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Tracy, I see your hand, and Richard, I see your hand too. So Tracy, and then Richard.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, my first comment is a relatively selfish one, because I live at the intersection, that is the entrance to Rob Field. And it is now a roundabout that even without events happening there, the roundabout is a cluster. It clogs up, people can't get in and out of this area, they end up stuck in the middle of the roundabout. And then the, like, the, the one lady actually expressed earlier, the parking over there is not sufficient for all of the people that are going to come over for pickleball, which means that they're going to impact the already impacted streets here. Now, I have to admit, in front of my house, and I'm not going to give away that, in that area, but in front of my house, there is always parking. But, but it is ridiculously impacted here for parking. So I have no idea where the pickleball people are even going to park, if it ends up being utilized as pickleball. Also, I was informed that the Peninsula Tennis Club situation is that half of the courts are used for educational purposes, because people are slower, they're not as strong, they're not playing really active games. And then the other half is actually more focused on people who are very experienced. And honestly, I, I think that that's a perfect solution for the tennis courts. I see them utilized on a regular basis, I walk my dog over there all the time, there is always people over there playing. During COVID, nobody was playing anything anywhere, everybody was terrified, right? But now, it's being utilized on a regular basis. I've also been informed that they had like 500 or under 600 members. And I mean, that's, that's amazing. I mean, I, you know, but 500, 600 people are not going to be on the tennis courts at all one time, right? But the fact is that people are utilizing these courts. Let's see, I also, you know, no offense to you guys, but I, I think that you're overreaching your ask an awful lot. You're asking for all of the tennis courts at Peninsula to be converted to pickleball? And I just don't, I don't think that's fair. Tennis is still a viable sport. And I believe that, you know, people still want to learn and play tennis. And, you know, I, I think if you would have come in with a more fair proposal and just said, hey, we'd like to convert a couple of tennis courts to pickleball, maybe that would have felt a little bit nicer, but you're essentially kicking out an entire organization of people. And I just, I don't think it's right, and I, I thought it was a huge overreach. So anyways, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Richard, and I also see Nicole in Virginia.
Okay, thank you. I, I enjoy hearing Stefan and Mike's enthusiasm for the pickleball, but at the same time, I hear a whole bunch of users of the tennis courts. I think the, the planning board is missing a perfect opportunity for a solution that might entertain all of the interested parties. Rather than throw out one user and bring in a new user, it's like, you recommend a roundabout right in front of Rob Field, and, and you get it. So why doesn't the planning board write a letter of recommendation to build some pickleball courts for the pickleball people somewhere? If not at Rob Field, maybe at Dusty Road Park. There's got to be some space that they can do that. I know that's a long reach. But now it's throwing out money for Build Back America, or whatever, they're finding money for the lifeguard tower, they're finding money for the pier, they're finding money for the library. It's a pickleball court, it sounds like a great opportunity to bring a whole new group of people into, and use users for Rob Field. I think we can accommodate everybody, is what I'm trying to say. And I would make a motion for that. Just a thought. And rather than throw out the tennis guys, bring in the pickleball or, or Bertsy Vaxa. Let's have everybody there. Just a thought, I want you to think about that, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I saw Nicole's hand, and then I'll go Virginia Newman.
Yes, thank you, Andrea. Richard, I like your suggestion about possibly adding pickleball courts without taking space away from the tennis players. I think that might be a good, a good compromise. I just, I don't feel comfortable necessarily setting a precedent of taking public space away from a nonprofit organization that has been in the community for a very long time, and essentially handing it to a for-profit enterprise. I also am interested to hear about what Mission Bay Parks Council has said about this project. Have they weighed in on it? This is, this is their asset, and so.
Yeah, you guys can respond. Stefan?
So we presented to the Mission Bay Parks Committee roughly a month ago. And we are presenting, and that was a quick presentation, it was only, I don't know, five minutes or something. We got invited back for a future meeting. And that'll be a full, I think, 30 to 60-minute presentation, to be determined. So they, they invited us back.
Can we respond to a couple of other things that were said earlier?
Were they direct questions or just comments? Because any direct question, sure, but if they're comments, as the meeting is already going on or a really long time, so I want to make sure we're getting to old board comments, and that we can move past this item.
Yeah, Kevin mentioned about court utilization, getting the data from the clubs, and we completely support that. We have video evidence, as Mike has said and I've alluded to, of every hour of the day, every day of the week. So I don't think we really need to debate this, we have video evidence of every single court, you know, at both clubs.
If I might, that seems to me a bit of an overreach in itself, to go out and videoing people as they're trying to utilize tennis courts. Seems, seems a little aggressive, as is this entire plan. I don't think that I can support it, but I would certainly like to hear more from what the Mission Bay Parks Council has to say before we take any action as the planning board. Thank you.
Nicole, I'm going to move on to Virginia then. Virginia?
Thanks for presenting tonight. I have some concerns. We, I would not be comfortable supporting the proposal without seeing what plans are for maintenance and security. It's been well maintained by the current operators. But a place like that would showing shade structures, seems like it would invite people who need shelter at night. And another, another concern of mine is that it, you, it's not that easy for young people from, say, from OB that wants to play tennis. It's not easy for them to navigate over to Barnes, it sounds simple. And as you pointed out, it's only 600 feet, but it's across a freeway interchange. And so a young tennis player can't easily walk from home to Barnes. They would need transportation to do that. So I think I'd be willing to support, if anything, a partial, like, it is divided in, the courts are divided into two groups. Maybe taking half of the courts and using them as a trial basis to see how that works out. After all, it's pretty much only paint and some holes in the surface for nets. So if, if it were not to work out, it could be reversed. But I, I don't support the idea of converting the whole facility to a different sport. Thanks.
Thank you, Virginia. Newman?
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on Richard's comment, which I felt hit it right on the nose. There's a fantastic park in between the Barnes Center and Rob Field, which, as you drive into this beautiful town now, you see tents and homeless people hanging out and all that. Beautify that, build 20 or 30 pickleball courts there to start. And if you need more space, there's plenty of space available there. So I mean, use your new sport that's catching on and getting more people to join. Use it as a tool to help beautify even more of OB that's kind of slipping in between dog park and just green wasted grass. Like I said, make a pickleball court there too. If it needs more, build more, if it's for profit, build more. And then not only would you be making OB a little bit more beautiful, but creating another buzz of a new sport that could possibly catch on. Good for all.
Thank you, Newman. Chris?
I'm going to lead off by saying I'm a racquetball guy. So I'm joking, I'm joking kind of, but I'm kind of not. And, and the reference is, actually, I did grow up playing racquetball in the eighties in a different state. And my father still loves it, he comes out here and he plays over on the racquetball and handball courts at Rob Field. And, but what's interesting is, you know, there is this shift in what's the most popular sport. So we're seeing this huge trend in pickleball, and my father, who plays racquetball, can confirm that in another state. It's a huge activity there as well. So anyway, just some anecdotal information, but I think Virginia actually has it right. I think before we, we talk about, you know, building new facilities or even taking over existing facilities, I think a trial period would be necessary. I think before we do that, we do need to see some data driving this, so we know how many courts could we, you know, potentially borrow and turn into pickleball. I, I agree, it's painted, it's a couple posts, and, you know, let's see, let's see what the, you know, let the people speak. Let's see what the, the community says, let's see what the turnout is. But I think, you know, a little trial and error, but also some, some data to support. How many courts do we want to try this on in the existing facilities? So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so Richard kind of alluded to having a motion, but does anyone else have a motion? We're running up to an hour spent on this now, so I would like to.
Virginia sort of had one as well.
Well, I would support a resolution to build pickleball courts. I mean, we can add some addendums to that if you like, and I'm open to any suggestions.
You'll be dead before Park and Rec follows through with that recommendation.
Well, I'm still alive there, Kevin, so I resemble that remark.
An hour, I, I want a motion, or in a second, and I want to move on.
I would just urge the Peninsula Tennis Club to decide four courts for pickleball use as a compromise to accommodate the pickleball-playing people in the community, but I don't, I can't go for this proposal.
Um, I would, I guess, more prefer to focus directly on the proposal, and like, and, yeah, and then up-down on that.
Then.
That's what they're seeking, a letter of support. I, I, you know, they, if they want to come back with a separate proposal, I'd be happy to do that. We can talk about that at a later time, but I, I don't think it's our place to amend anything in their proposal. And I would prefer just a motion to support or deny.
I support a motion to deny it.
They proposed half as well, I think at the end of their presentation. So I think Virginia's motion is relevant to their proposal.
Okay, well, I did hear Richard say he motioned to deny the proposal, and I did hear a second. Who was the second?
It was me, Andrea.
Paul.
Nicole, okay, so then, I have to take a vote on that. Is there any discussion?
I would like to accept Kevin's addendum to that, though, I think it's appropriate to give it a shot.
Okay, so you want, no, 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 guys, guys.
So the proposal is a total annexation of the tennis group, I, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
How about the motion to deny the proposal as presented?
It sounds like Richard just changed his motion to match Virginia's.
Yeah, well, I think we're all.
Stop, everyone needs to stop, everyone needs to stop, we're getting out of order here, and I need to get this train back on track. So please, for the rest of the time, do not speak unless you're called upon. Thank you. So we had a motion on the floor, we had a second. There was a friendly amendment from Virginia to, what I'm gathering, to accept the end of their proposal, where they asked to have our support to utilize half the tennis courts for pickleball. Is that how you would like to amend your motion, Richard?
I'm amenable to that, yes.
Okay, Nicole, you're the second, are you amenable to that?
No, I'm sorry, I would like to withdraw my second.
You have a motion, is there a second on that motion? Half of the, no, I'm, I'm, I'm still, is there a second on that motion? Kevin is the second. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes, I have something to say. We are tasked with listening to the voice of the community in these meetings. And tonight, I've been taking tally notes on how many people spoke in favor of the Peninsula Tennis Club, and how many people spoke in favor of the pickleball courts. And it's twice as many people stood up for the tennis courts. And so I would just like to throw that into consideration, that this is obviously a larger discussion than the 12 people that spoke tonight, but.
But I, I felt like the, the testimony from the public was clear that Ocean Beach does not support this. And I don't think that we should be making a, a sort of a blanket approval without, without a little bit stronger support from the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I am still taking comment only on this motion. So Mandy, you've had your hand up.
Yes, and, and I'm, yes, and I'm speaking as a subcommittee member for the parks ad hoc. Being that we don't have any renderings of what the plan is and where they'd like to see it, as well as Point Loma Tennis Club has an agreement with the city for the space that they have. So I don't even think that the motion would be applicable to ask them to take over a portion of their courts. And so what I'm asking is, can it come to the ad hoc committee for us to go through it and give the pickleball people and both the Point Loma Tennis Club people more time to prepare and provide us with the renderings of what they would like to envision? If there is an opportunity for us to install pickleball courts at Rob Field? I, I just, we don't see even any plan. So I am a little confused as to why motions are being made to approve this request. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Tracy, did you have any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, except that I wouldn't accept the, the addendum at all. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I did see, Stefan, you had your hand up. Would you like to have a comment on the motion before I call for the vote?
Yeah, I think it was Nicole mentioned testimony of public. We purposely did not have any of our petition list sign up for a comment because we had the time to present the proposal, I guess, ourselves. But if, if that mattered, we could have our, our supporters email and phone call into the board and demonstrate, basically, which District Two asked for that, Mayor's Office asked for that. If that mattered, the players would be more than happy. They want to do it, but we told them not to.
I appreciate that, but I also feel like this is the second time that you brought this before the planning board. And so.
We need to vote on the motion.
I think this is the first time.
No, Stefan, we need to vote on the motion now. Thank you. Tracy, will you please call the roll? As a reminder, the motion is to support their proposal to, to support the utilization for half of the tennis courts at Rob Field for pickleball.
Are we, we're, we're voting on the amendment, correct?
That's, well, that's the, that's the whole motion because Richard changed his motion. Nicole withdrew her second. Kevin seconded it.
Uh, okay, because I, I mean, I'm, I'm still confused. Like, I wouldn't vote for the amendment at all, like.
Okay.
And I would vote for the first.
So I, we just need to call the roll. This is what we're voting on. You're voting on whether or not you support the use of half of the tennis courts for pickleball to support a letter written on behalf of the board to request that half, that, that's it. That's the motion.
Okay, that, okay, so Chris.
Andre is going to kill me. My vote is yes, but a friendly amendment possibly that this is on a trial basis. Is that agreeable to those who supported the original motion? I think it was Richard, Richard.
You have to be Richard and Kevin. Do you accept that friendly amendment?
I think that's reasonable. I don't know. Kevin, what do you think?
Yeah, that sounds fine. I mean, in fact, the pickleball guys should be putting money aside to revert it back if it's a failure, like an escrow account or something like that.
Okay.
So I guess we just need to determine what that trial period is. Is it six months? I don't know. What does the board think?
A year?
It's your, it's your amendment.
I'm fine with a year. I'm fine with a year if the board supports that. I just think we, you know, rather than committing full time, I think it makes sense to try it. Otherwise, I like the amendment, so my vote is yes.
There you go. Okay. So now the motion is support for a trial basis of a year to convert half of the tennis courts into pickleball courts. Continue with the roll, Tracy. Thank you.
I'm just not sure where that first motion went. So anyways, I, anyway.
The motion got changed because it was amended. And as the motion maker, Richard amended it. Nicole withdrew her second, but Kevin seconded the motion that Richard amendment amended.
Okay, all right, Anthony.
Anthony had a hard stop at seven thirty.
Oh, okay, thank you. I vote no. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig? Craig?
Gone.
No, he's here. I'll come back. Richard?
Yes.
George? George?
Sorry, I'm here, yes.
Andrea?
No.
Newman?
No.
Nicole?
No.
Virginia? Anybody see Virginia?
Yeah, but she's muted.
Virginia showed her thumb up. We'll go back to Craig. Craig, where are you? He's not muted. So, oh, hey, Craig.
Hey.
Craig, are you yay or nay?
I.
Now you muted yourself. Okay, I mute. Okay. What do you vote?
No.
Did we get everybody? Yeah, let me count. Hold on. We have a tie.
Tie goes to the runner. Motion doesn't pass.
Okay. Does anyone have a second motion? Otherwise, I'm going to close out this item and we're going to move along.
I would move that four courts be same as the first, except four courts be set aside for a trial period.
Is that even a second back?
I seconded, yeah.
Okay, Tracy, call the roll.
So Chris?
Yes.
Anthony's out. I vote no. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
My motion, yes.
Richard?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Andrea?
No.
Newman?
No.
Nicole?
No.
Virginia?
Yes.
All right, well, that, that put the tip the scale, I think. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah.
Tracy, there's a comment in the chat that there's not a four court option available due to placement issues.
Okay, we can figure that out later. We passed it, and I'll discuss them of how we can move forward with the support of the motion that we passed. And we'll go from there. I'm going to go ahead and close this out because it's well over the time allotted. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. Thank you for your enthusiasm on both sides. Hopefully, we can find a solution that gets everyone off the couch and active in the years to come. Thank you so much. Sonia, you've been so patiently waiting. Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Do you need to share your screen?
I would, but I also wanted to say you've done a great job managing contentious topics. And I really love to see the engagement of this community. It's really wonderful. So our presentation is roughly like twenty minutes. It is late, so I don't know. You know, if you want us to continue, I'm here, willing to do it, or if you think it's better that we come back next month.
No, we're all here. We're happy to hear it. Yeah, if you, you know, if there's any brevity you can find in it, that would be appreciated, but otherwise.
Sure, I wanted to consider that because, like I said, you know, you guys.
But otherwise, we're excited to hear it.
Okay.
The floor is yours. Thank you.
Okay, I am not able to share right now. Okay, I still don't have sharing capabilities.
Try again.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, guys. So give me a moment so I can pull our slides up. Give me one second. What is this? All right, so I'm Sonia Robinson. I am the program manager and lead organizer with Protect Our Communities Foundation. We also, I also have my board member, Lori Sedanya, is also here. And we appreciate giving us the opportunity to talk about the benefits of local clean energy. So we're here to discuss a couple topics. One is dealing with our state policy. Some of you may be familiar with our net energy metering, some call it NAMM, for solar customers that California will be making a decision on. This is a very contentious topic as well. We also want to highlight what's happening with San Diego Community Power. We all will be commu- San Diego Community Powers very soon. So why does this matter? I think that electricity is something that we all use, we all need, but we rarely think about where it comes from, the source of it. Some of us do, but not everyone. But yet we do definitely pay attention when the costs are skyrocketing. And right now, that's what's happening. Our SDGNE bills are out of control. We also believe that rooftop solar definitely speaks to the solutions for equity. It is something that we believe is part of our local benefits for all San Diegans, as well as a key part of our solutions for climate action. I personally believe, and you guys have already demonstrated tonight, that our ordinary people, we have the power to come up to make changes for better. And I also believe that our local policies should definitely be there to support us, as well as to be accountable for the local benefits for us. All right, so something that took place unanimously at our city council, which I'm very proud of, and hopefully you are as well. And that is that our city council passed a resolution unanimously in support of net energy metering. And a brief statement of that resolution states, "A resolution of the San Diego City Council urging the California Public Utilities Commission to adopt a lawful net energy metering rulemaking decision which supports continuing growth of customer-side solar energy installations." So right now, as I mentioned, as far as taking action, and you guys seem like a taking action type of group, which I really love, is we're asking that you get involved and let your voices be heard for our state policy with our governor. If you can call the governor's office with this contact information and urge that he supports a fair solar deal that will continue to allow rooftop solar to grow substantially, as well as our senator. If you can contact Senator Tony Atkins' office, we've had an opportunity to meet with her as well. I understand that she reads every letter. So contacting her office, letting her know that you will like her to sign on to a legislative letter that supports rooftop solar, supports net energy metering solar. And if you can contact your local assembly member, Chris Ward, and give him big props and express your appreciation that he actually signed on to the NAMM legislative letter supporting rooftop solar, as well, as well as Assembly Member Dr. Keela Weber also signed on to. So what is causing these high extraordinary costs? And that is the capital projects, the transmission and distribution projects that are, that are investor-owned utilities like to invest in. And those high costs are the reason why our bills are astronomical. Like, on my bill, I'm looking at it because it is so painful. I'm thinking they made a mistake. My cost distribution and transmission, those costs is more or just equal to the amount of electricity that I generated. And I think it's important for you to know too. I muted.
There's a little background noise.
Yeah, that wasn't for me, though.
Okay, I think you're good.
Okay, um, so our investor-owned utility, SDGNE, they profit significantly over one million dollars a day, net profit, not gross profits, net profits. And so I don't know if, Lori, did you have anything that you wanted to comment on? That might be her.
Yeah, and I'm in a noisy spot. I'm actually down at the, I'm actually down at the farmer's market, so I apologize for the noise. But what Sonia is discussing shows that the investor-owned utilities, their profits are their main power service, such as up in Sacramento. The rates are considerably less, and even when you have hotter weather, much more stable price structures. So San Diego is dealing with a shock rate.
So, so Lori, it sounds like you're breaking up a little bit.
Go ahead.
Hello?
I apologize. I was out at the farmer's market and I stuck, I, I'm in a place that's still fairly noisy. So go on ahead and I'll.
Okay.
Put myself back on mute.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. All right. So now, on the flip side of the large transmission and infrastructure capital projects is these solar projects. So right now, on the other hand, on the other end of that is a two billion dollar, of a two billion dollar transmission line is actually a solution, is the low cost of a solar farm. Our Edison Electric Institute is an investor-owned utility trade association. So it is important, someone mentioned it in this meeting, what our board member Lori also identifies, following the money. But all of the California's investor-owned utility companies have given two billion dollars a year to Edison Electric Institute. So they're like their mouthpiece, if you will, as far as speaking out against net energy metering. Yet they were quoted or cited in two thousand and twelve identifying that the transmission and distribution model that the investor-owned utilities will become obsolete. So Lori was talking about these highest rates. On this chart right here, you see that SDGNE's rate is twice as much as Sacramento. What's really important on here is that Sacramento is a community-owned utilities. They are a public power utilities, and their rates are half of what our rates are. And you may be aware of this, but SDGNE rates are the highest in the entire country, not just a continental country, but they're the highest, even including Hawaii, which is really significant. And where you see the dotted red lines is that is where the projection is going. So this chart right here just again identifies our baseline of our rates would have already increased and what is projected to increase another sixty-four percent by two thousand and thirty. So this shows you here, as I mentioned before, that SDGNE's profits were significantly over a million dollars a day. They pro- their profits was over eight hundred million dollars for two thousand and twenty. So as I talked about the transmission and distribution capital projects, the blue line shows over the last decade, you can see a trend of where the transmission capital projects are increasing over the last twenty years. And that the red line is where it would have been if it was not for rooftop solar being in a marketplace. So we also believe that rooftop solar is the solution. We could put rooftop solar plus batteries to our communities out there in East County, and the utilities can shut the power off. And our communities can still have their electricity and power that they need, as well as prevent the wildfires. It's not the poles that create the fires, it's the actual when the lines touch. And so rooftop solar plus batteries is a very low-cost solution in addressing that as well. So for the state of California, we have been the leader across the union for rooftop solar. And I know that our former governor Schwarzenegger really started kicking. And I know that our former Governor Schwarzenegger really started kicking this off. And I think we should also be even more proud being from San Diego that there are more customer-owned rooftop solar systems in San Diego County than that's leading the country. I mean, that's leading the state, so therefore leading the country. And so that is another thing that we should be proud about, and we want to continue to make sure that happens to grow. So this is talks about the decline in SDGNE's peak demand over time. So you could see the dip in their demand because of rooftop solar, but yet our rates are increasing. So this is addressing, I'm trying to go fast, guys, because I know you've had, already had a long meeting. This is addressing that proposal that's at the California Public Utilities Commission. So on the left, you see a blue bar that shows $10. Then you see this red bar that's $64. So right now, rooftop solar customers are paying a monthly minimum bill of $10. And it's great, right? It's gravy for them. It's, it's really good. Well, the problem is, is what was proposed, and that proposal came out December 13th of 2021, is over a 600% increase. So our solar industry experts have determined going from that $10 to $64 would literally just destroy the solar industry. And we don't want that to happen, because that means that's people's jobs, people that we know, as well as it would impede our solar mandates locally here, throughout our city and county, as well as the state. So these are just editorials of what people are saying, because this is a state policy that we're asking our San Diegans to also get involved in. So LA Times state, you know, don't slash incentives for California rooftop solar. SACB stated slashing solar incentives only helps private utilities. California regulators must back down. And in San Francisco Chronicle, it says, "If California is worried about energy prices, take on PG&E before gouging rooftop solar." So there is an argument saying that rooftop solar is only for the high wealthy people, and that is just not true. So this chart right here shows that our low, moderate working families are actually investing in solar in, I mean, in fast rates, right? So if you look at this chart here, you will see that a lot of our low-to-medium-sized income families are making those investments to do what's right for our environment, our climate, for climate justice, and for their own utility bills. So that's just to combat that argument, that it's not just for the, the wealthy. We also believe in equity, and we believe that there are solutions currently at the California Public Utilities Commission called Care on Bill Financing that could be a solution for our multifamily home buildings, as well as our renters. And so this is where the infrastructure for the solar will be tied to the meter, and that's the behind-the-meter concept, and not to the actual customer themselves. Lori, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, that the city of San Diego just extended the 50-year leases for the affordable housing at the Orchard Apartments over by the Midway area. And I suggested, and Joe LaCava accepted and amended that, those three leases, to include solar and require solar power. So one way to get solar onto affordable housing is when current housing is updated, when leases are renegotiated, that the city can, as a landlord, put in that requirement. And that lowers the utility cost for the people who live in those affordable apartments. And it generates a higher return on investment for the city because they're using less energy and paying less overall for the operations of the buildings. So that's a, that's a method of imposing solar on affordable housing to lower our costs as taxpayers who own and manage these properties.
That's excellent, right. And it's expanding that equity. So on, on that next topic, on San Diego's community power. So you guys are very familiar. I know we came out here asking for support for our community choice energy. I was an advocate, and you guys did support it. So we wanted to achieve 100% of clean renewable electricity by 2035. I think it's really important that you know that one of our board members, Bill Powers, he was appointed to the task force for the feasibility study for our CCE as well. So real quick, since a lot of us will be, become San Diego Community Power customers soon, what is CCE? And that is the procurement. So they will procure and do the power purchase agreements for our clean renewable energy, and they will collaborate and work with investor-owned utilities, in this case, as SDGNE, that will actually still transmit and deliver, deliver electricity, as well as send you the bill. Now, in the business plan that me, as a community advocate, wanted, which many of us, or all of us wanted, was local. We wanted local power. That was our mantra. We wanted local projects, local energy, local benefits, and local control. And that is exactly what we're asked, and that was part of the business plan. So right now, there is a lot, there is a roadmap for us to continue to build out locally. Here, you can show that we have more than 10,000 gigawatts of availability of rooftop solar and parking lots that we need to cover with solar. What has been happening at San Diego Community Power is that their purchase power agreements have really reflected more like an investor-owned utilities versus what we advocated for. And that is that they've been doing a big, large projects far away, which will then increase those transmission costs for us. So Imperial County, Riverside County, 70 miles east in San Diego County, in the Okuma Project. And then that is Torrance, New Mexico, not New Mexico County in California. So what I would strongly like to recommend is that you ask San Diego Community Power to do a presentation to your group, so that you can understand what is their strategy and be part of that community input for their strategy to build out rooftop solar locally. Because that's what you guys agreed to when we advocated for community choice energy. And I know, I believe that's what you still want, and I know that's exactly what I want as an advocate for it as well. So I want to skip through this a little bit. Now, some of you guys might have also been familiar with that franchise agreement that took place last year. Well, I think it's noteworthy to let you know that the city's consultant back in 1970, their paid consultant, as well as who the city paid as their consultants in 2020, both concluded the exact same thing. And that is if the city did not receive conforming bids, which in 2020, they did not, that the city should move forward with a public power slash community-owned utilities, and that the residents, the San Diegans, would benefit with lower rates for that. Now, out of that agreement, what took place is that the city did agree to do a feasibility study, and they allowed, they allocated $1 million to their expenditures for a public power feasibility study. And that's to take place in 2020, this year, fiscal year 2022. And the city just recently put out an RFP for it. It should be, we should be getting some updates on that this year, I mean, this month. There is also, the city also voted to have a citizens' task force study for public power, and there's plenty of people who applied for it. And we're just asking for an update to make sure that that task force works in conjunction with the feasibility study as well. Again, this is your call to action, asking you to contact the governor's office, as well as our local state Senator Tony Atkins' office, and ask them to support solar. Ask Tony Atkins to sign on to the legislative letter to support rooftop solar, and congratulate Assembly Chris Ward for the courage to stand by and sign on for net metering solar. Thank you. If there's any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any questions for Sonia? Any comments?
Uh, I'd like to see that contact information up here a little bit more. You clicked off of that. So is it Sonia at protectourcommunities.org?
Yes, sir. I will put my contact information in here for you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm an electrical engineer, and I'm very curious to know what's happening with this transition from SDGNE, because I just paid 40 cents a kilowatt hour for electricity, and that's unconscionable. I mean, 20 cents a kilowatt is way too much. San Diego is getting full-on screwed by SDGNE. Pardon my French there. But we need to, we need to figure out some other solution. And this new, uh, this new organization that's taken, they're just following in the same footsteps, it sounds like. So we're going to keep getting screwed by this new quasi-public organization. Our community needs to be more involved in this, because I don't think anybody's paying attention. We're getting waylaid real fast. Anyways, thank you. If you could put it up here, I'd appreciate it. I want to get back in touch with you. I want some more information from you.
All right, thank you so much. And so this is the thing, one of our board members says, and I, I love his statement on this. He says, you know, we're, we want to be concerned, he's caused himself a concern uncle. And, and I guess we can be, you know, concerned relatives, right? For San Diego Community Power to make sure, as you mentioned, that it does not take on the same behaviors as what we're, what we got away from, right? I didn't advocate for San Diego Community Power to be a replica of SDGNE. We wanted something different. We wanted something better.
Absolutely true.
Yes, so Richard, I totally appreciate your, your passion and.
That's my electric bill we're talking about.
Yeah, we all have it, right? We all, we all need it. We all have it. And right now, it's been really painful. So definitely love to, you know, be in contact with you as well. And again, we want to, we just want to kind of like re-steer the direction that we all advocated for. I literally was a community advocate when it was just CCE, Community Choice Energy, and then eventually it evolved to a name.
We need to take it by the horns right now while we can, before it's too late.
I agree with you. I love your, I love your energy. I love your energy.
You know, anyone, um, any other questions for Sonia? Okay, yeah, like she said, if you agree with what they're saying or have any more comments, you please do contact our state representatives. You know them. You see them here every month. Not this month, though. Maybe, I'm just kidding, but you know where you can get them. Thank you, thank you guys for sticking around through all of that. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Andrea. And I can either provide the presentation and the link or email it to you that you can share it with a group, whichever.
Email it to me and I can, I can put it around. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sonia.
Um, okay, so I just have.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. Enjoy the farmer's market. I just have a few quick things. Luckily, they were kind of already covered. So yeah, the STBR going to Coastal on the 9th, so that's next week. And then the day after that is, I'm sorry, the Build Back Better on the 10th. So the 9th and the 10th, I will, I can send out links to all of that tomorrow morning. So you have that available for you if you have a moment to call in or listen to everything. We will go ahead and finalize election results tomorrow, and then we will vote to approve them next month, set the new board, and elect Executive Board, as well as committees. So be prepared for that. That is all my chair update. Do we have any other updates or reports? Craig, do you have treasurers?
Yes, I do. The current bank balance is 1,019.26, and we spent $300 last month for the annual PO box rental at OB Business Center. So I would urge anyone else who has anything potentially which would be available for reimbursement to the city to start getting the documentation on that to me, because typically, I try to get the reimbursement request to the city done by May, so that I can handle, get it to the city for the, in time for their fiscal year changeover.
Perfect. Do I have any other? Laura? Laura, you're on mute.
My audio. There we go. Thank you, Andrea. The Ocean Beach Friends of the Library had a Zoom meeting with the library people and the engineering people last week. And they are moving along with their renderings. They really want to have a public meeting. And they're going to give you a call, Andrea, and also Cory, hoping, what, what they thought would be great was if we had a open meeting sponsored by the Friends, the Planning Board, and the Town Council. And they're not sure when. As for when the OB library opens, it is now only one of two that is still closed. And the reason is staffing. We just had the youth services person resign. She's moving to North Carolina so she can buy a house. And anyway, so we have a lot of openings in OB. And Misty Jones, the Director of the, of the Library Administration, said that probably it's going to be more, it'll be more, the end of March or April before the OB library is open. And that's it. That's what I know.
Thank you, Laura. Mandy, do you have a report from Peninsula?
I guess. I just wanted to let everyone know that we're also holding our annual election. We have five seats that are available. And if you know of anyone in the Peninsula Boundary who's interested in serving on that board, they would need to submit their applications no later than 5:00 PM on March 10th, when we will be hosting our candidate forum. And the applications can be found online at PCPB.net. And the election will take place on the 17th of March at the Point Loma Library. We've extended the hours. It will be from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, where people can walk up or drive up and bring their ballots. And so again, just spread the word. If you know of anyone wanting to serve, we do a lot for the community. And we'd love to have a different new members, basically, to join our, our board. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mandy. Tracy, do you have something from the Arts Commission?
Yeah, I do. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the last few years, the Commission has been doing something like a heat map that shows the impact of the funding that goes out. And the 2021 Impact Map is now live. So like I said, this is the third iteration, and it basically is really cool, because it shows where the money is going, and then the community reach of that money. So you can see that it's not just going to an organization here or an organization in there. It's actually the money and funding is getting out into the community. So I am going to just put a link to that in the chat. And if anybody is interested in more information, I can send it to you. But like I said, it's a really great way to see where your tax dollars are going.
Richard?
Tracy, I want to say thank you for your help in this election cycle. And Andrea, I'm going to see you tomorrow, hopefully at the Business Center.
Yeah, I will text you at 10:00. And if we can run and do it at 10:00, because I have a meeting at 10:30.
10 o'clock. Roger that. I'll make arrangements.
I think that's when they open.
Send me a text and confirm that, okay?
Yeah.
Hey, Richard, do you need, do you need any help, or did my video explain everything?
Well, I picked up some ballots. There were not ballots. I picked up some registration forms that were in the, I don't know about, the, the answer to your question is, I don't know. But we'll find out. We're still going to need to get the, the online election results. And I don't know how to get that.
Did you get the video that I sent to you that?
No, I did not. I did not.
Okay, I will try to send.
So that was an Apple video, and I don't have an Apple video or whatever.
Well, it's not a, it's a quick time video, so you should have been able to get it. But anyways.
Can you call me tomorrow or call me later?
Yeah, if, if you need me to walk you through it, I can walk you through it. But if, if, you know, I'm trying to stay as out of it as possible.
No, I understand. I totally understand. I understand. Whatever works for you.
Okay, well, I'll try to send the video again, and if you still can't open it tomorrow, call me, and I will walk you through the system.
Uh, about you that, you're going to have to send your, your phone number there, because I don't know that I have your phone number. I got your, I got your email, but.
Okay. All right, cool.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out.
We'll, we'll figure it out tomorrow. That's what I want to see. She's going to try to do everything right.
Yeah, we'll have everything above board.
It's all above board. Everything is good.
Okay, saying that makes it seems like it's not. But we, so we're wrapping up. I'm sorry for losing it a little bit. But typically, I like our banter, but tonight, we just had to keep it moving. So I'll see y'all next month where we announce, and again, keep your eyes out for the election results by tomorrow. Thank you all so much. Have a great rest of your evening.